Council meeting, City of Peru, March 1st to order. I stand due to the pledge of allegiance led by me, then the invitation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the states of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible. For liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy upon us. We pray that you would bless our nation, our state, bless our county and our city. Lord, we pray that you would pour out your favor and blessings upon us, bless our school systems, our economy. Lord, we lift up our first responders to you, our police officers, our fire department, that you would keep them safe, that you would encourage them, Lord, as they face harsh situations that are taxing on their emotions and their bodies. We pray that you would renew them and strengthen them. We thank you for their willingness to serve our community. We pray for this meeting. We pray that you would bless the mayor, the treasurer, the clerk, the attorney, and the council. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Everybody can be seated. Pastor Wedding, thank you. Roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Floto.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sahadashini.
I am here.
Wolf.
Here. All right. Does anybody have any corrections or anything that they want to add to the minutes? If not, then we'll just go ahead and just, if we can get a motion to dispense with the rules and accept the minutes as written without reading them. Somebody wants to motion for that.
Tom here. I move we accept the minutes as they're written.
Excellent. I'll go ahead and second that. Roll call.
Anderson. Anderson. Are you muted?
Steve.
Yes, sorry.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have council liaison communications, and I have a couple of notes before we start that. A couple of things that I've had people mention to me is maybe try to keep to your own personal liaison shift during this time. Otherwise, if you have other things to report, report them during communications. Try to keep your communications just to a couple of minutes and try to keep them to things that the public or things that other people on the council would like to know. And then Susan also, when I talked to Susan last, she had mentioned too that she would be willing to put the council communications on the agenda. So if you have something, you know, before she puts out the agenda for the next month, she can go ahead and put that on the council liaison communication, so it'll be on in writing as well. So, and I'll just go ahead and do mine real quick. Mine is from the ordinance review board. Steve, Kathleen, and I met on February the 18th at 2:00 PM. We worked on ordinance 152.18. And hopefully we'll have that ready to go for the council to approve either in April or May. And this has to do with the fees and the permits for different inspections. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to report?
Yeah, I'm also going to work with Dustin on the nepotism ordinance and make some corrections there. Oh, this is Kathleen. So, yeah.
Kathleen, just on that nepotism ordinance, I'm just stating our nepotism ordinance represents the state statute or represents coincides with the state statute. I guess what, what would you honestly change?
To add in-laws and, yeah, to add in-laws on the nepotism regulation or ordinance.
Is, is that somebody's in the public that's phones going off or?
I think so.
Can you guys hear that?
Are we still, are we still doing the liaison?
Wait, wait just a minute. Wait just a minute, Pete.
Okay.
Dustin?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
No, I, I understand that, yes.
Okay, we'll get together if that's all right. Or I'll talk with you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Can we move ahead with the committees? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yes, okay. Kathleen and I are chairing the committee known as Peru Economic Growth and Sustainability. We met a couple of weeks ago. And the main issues that we discussed, some of the concerns of the panel were maybe giving the Miami Indians a voice, maybe some kind of a placard or a sign, maybe. There was a couple of members pointed to recycling program, got some good ideas about recycling for the city. They, one of the members mentioned the water, possibly a water park, maybe in the future somewhere. We looked at the possibility of community concerts, opening up the amphitheater, not just amphitheater for outdoor concerts, but also maybe doing something of that nature using the civic center, maybe some musical events. And then home shelter, family shelter, maybe an issue we could revisit somewhere down the road. And also, what about, one person had brought this up, possibly opening up, I don't know what the status is on these rooms above the businesses and the downtown businesses. Could we possibly rent those out? You know, are they in good enough condition to maybe offer rental space, you know, for the community? And then what are we going to do with the old jailhouse? What was a question that someone had, the old jailhouse? And also, one person expressed an interest to make a, possibly open up a station for kayak rentals, maybe, you know, just floating downstream to the Walbach, maybe with a kayak.
Pete? So that kayak business, I don't know if you misunderstood, but that's already in the works.
Oh, it's in the works. Okay, thanks Kathleen. I didn't know. Okay, very good.
The thing is, everybody, you know, this is, Pete and I are pretty excited about this because everybody, it's just the first meeting was a brainstorming session. And Makita's going to come and talk with us this Thursday, and Brick and Jim are going to be there. We're excited about that, aren't we, Pete?
Yeah, very nice. Yeah, we got a good turnout. So, we're looking for good things to happen.
This is Mark from the Peru Park Board meeting. Gary and Jeff are working on the pricing for some new memberships and packages for the new, this golf course which being designed within the golf course. Eighteen additional carts they are going to get as well with the purchase of baskets. Also, the Peru Park Board will join with the Peru Public Library in the summer entertainment at the amphitheater every Wednesday from June 2nd through July 28th. This will be a family fun time. The show, everyone projects that the Peru, all the projects that is at the Peru Public Library will be there at the Peru Amphitheater. Also, the animal control, last report that I had, they had four dogs up there. And the street department has done a nice job of cleaning up the streets when we had all that snow a couple of weeks ago. So I did congratulate those guys earlier today. The virus vaccination is going well around the county. And in the courthouse, they're going to have the floors cleaned and also relaxed in that particular time. The Miami County Highway Department has gotten bids on five different things, and they will announce those later at a different time. Jim Ted was also there today, and he was presenting Phase 3 of the O-C-R-A grant for COVID funding. And that will, it's a grant which will allow the program to services those students and staff with middle illness issues at the school, which provides an opportunity to fill the gaps where these individuals may otherwise not receive COVID. So basically therapists at all three schools will also be provided there as well. So that's basically all I have. Ninety percent of that grant will be funded and 10% will be local matched with that according to Jim Ted. And one other thing is that condolences out to the family from Saturday morning. They had that fire south end of town where they lost three small children. So pray for that family because, you know, they lost three small children at that particular time. That's all I have.
I've got one. Does anybody, can I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Okay, this is Kathleen. I went to the Makita meeting, the board meeting where it was public, and had a really good experience. But they are, Endot has once again conducting another survey to see the efficacy of the J-turns. And so right now, all of that is on hold until that's, that's finished. I'm taking a similar webinar to learn more about economic development across Indiana and how it will help our city. So I want to thank Makita for that. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah. I do. I've got four. The aviation board met on February 9th at 7:00 PM at the Peru Municipal Airport. The meeting is open to the public. The financial report, hangar rents are on track, waiting on a couple for January. All accounts are in line with the budget. The managers report, they sold 190 gallons of low lead and 4.95 gallons of jet fuel. The city loan truck with a plow lost the left rear brake cylinder over the weekend of the storm, so Joel Evert helped to get the runway open. They will be buying 2,000 gallons of low lead at a cost of $4.17 a gallon to sell. This will be lower than Kokomo and Marion. For the engineers report, the FAA grant assessment for 2021 is due. They voted and passed that, and Mark will sign and send it to the FAA. Phase 2 of electrical rehabilitation is waiting for spring, for dirt work and C's to be planted. Then Endot and FAA will be invited to inspect afterwards. A new member of the board, Glenn Russell, was welcomed, and the open house of 2021 will be July 31st. Then for the planning commission, the elections were held and Sandy Faust was elected chairman and Dennis C. for vice chairman. Order of business, an ordinance for an alley next to 117 East 8th Street was requested to be closed. It was discussed, voted on, and passed. It will be presented tonight at the city council meeting. A city for ordinance for setbacks for buildings was discussed, voted on, and passed. It will be at the city council meeting too. The ordinance on lot size specs was tabled to be discussed by the committee and presented at a letter date. For the Peru utility, February meetings were held on the 3rd and 17th at 4:00 PM at Peru Utilities and by Zoom. Since I reported on the 3rd last time, I will focus on the 17th. I attended by Zoom since we had a new snowstorm and freezing camps. The payments were approved for claims. It's also water tracker time, and Josh will be here discussing that with us. The board voted and passed to have a new water truck, replacing a truck that had 75,000 hard miles. It will be offered for bids internally. Also, a gate actuator was voted and passed to be replaced. Then for the Civic Center Advisory Committee, we met on February 27th at 9:30 at City Hall in person and by Zoom. The next meeting will be March 20th at 9:30 at City Hall in the morning. We discussed the newsletter and survey posted on Facebook. There were lots of positive comments and good ideas. I will write a new newsletter, be posted on Facebook, the City Center website, and a new Facebook page for the Civic Center. A special thank you to Ashley, Dylan, Brendan Douglas for their help with the website and new Facebook page. Ashley will be taking reservations at City Hall and phone number is 765-472-2400 for the foreseeable future. We discussed the rates and hopefully have that settled. They will be revealed in the newsletter. Mayor Hewer and Dustin Kern have designed a contract to be used for the Civic Center. And a thank you to the committee members that are helping to contact vendors about selling their services at the Civic Center. We are hopeful that many will do so, and that was an enjoyment too. Thanks.
Hey, Pat, could I ask a pad of questions? This is Peter Sahadashini.
Is it quick?
Yes, real quick. How soon can we, how soon are we going to open? Is there a date? Like, hey, I want to schedule an event. How soon are we? Do we have a projected date?
Not yet.
Not, okay. That's it. All right.
Does anybody else have any other communications?
Towards the end. I will, I will towards the end.
Okay, okay, great. We're going to move on to unfinished business, which we have none, and then that leads us to new business. And so I'd like to entertain a motion for, to consider Resolution Number 6, 2021, a resolution establishing a rate tracking factor for the municipal electricity utility of the city of Peru, Indiana. Can I get a motion to consider that?
Anderson, so moved.
Second, Tom.
Great. All right. Does anybody have any discussion on, oh, yeah.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any discussion on that? Looks like the rate went up .0024, and I believe Josh is on. So does anybody have any, any discussion or questions over that?
Josh, how much is that going to increase the monthly bill?
For, and the .0024 is a average over all of the rate classes for the residential customers. That will be typically it's a thousand kilowatts.
Yeah.
That would be about $3.68. Mayor, do you, can you open up the share, document share, so I can maybe put some, a couple of things on the screen? Is that possible?
Hang on just a minute.
So if you look at comparable rates as to where we are now with, with what this rate adjustment does, the tracker does, Duke Energy is about, for 1,000 kilowatts, is about $138.72. Heartland RMC, which is Walbach, they're at about $134.87. Miami Cats RMC is $144.34, and Peru Utilities $107.04. So we're still significantly below our local area.
Hold that down at the bottom, Dave said share.
Josh, are those rates effective for the, for the rest of the 2021 or?
Those, those are for the second quarter.
They're for April, May, and June, right?
The second quarter, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Josh.
Josh, are you okay with us moving on without those shared documents, or do you want us to wait on those?
No, that, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I was just trying to, I was going to put that graphic up so you guys could see it instead of me just talking about a bunch of numbers, but that's fine.
Do you want us to wait for that, or would be okay to move on?
If you're ready to move on, I'm fine with that.
Okay, can, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6, 2021, and if I could get a second on that.
Tom, second.
Anderson, second.
Anderson.
Did you get that, Susan?
Yeah.
I think Tom and Anderson seconded it.
You motioned, Steve seconded.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Roll call. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, moving on, I'd like to ask for somebody to make a motion to consider Resolution Number 7, 2021. This is a resolution establishing rate tracking factor for the city of Peru municipal water utility.
Anderson, so moved.
Okay. Second? Anybody got a second on that?
I second. Sahadashini.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, does anybody have any discussion on that?
Not on that, but I do have one. We're unable to share the screen so that, so that you can put your information up there. Unless you can talk Dave through it, if Dave sees his camera or his laptop, if you can talk him how to get a split screen.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how you do it from your end. We usually just set ours up to where you can, you can share all the time.
Josh.
It's okay. Yeah.
What he would do is he would click share screen down at the bottom, and then he would click on who, who he can give permission to.
Well, it says, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. I've got it on there now.
You know what, Josh, you said that you're okay with not sharing, this is Kathleen, you're okay with not sharing.
Yeah, I mean, I can just, I'll try, I'll try to give you the figures and go into the background on what, what we're all calling a tracker, which is a CPI adjustment, so the Consumer Price Index adjustment.
Great, thank you.
I'll just move on, Mayor. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
That's all right, I can move on.
I think we're just going to move on, right?
Yeah, it takes too much time.
Okay, Josh, did you have anything else that you wanted to discuss about this? I mean, this is basically just a new way that you guys are kind of trying to establish the water tracker, right?
Right, so the Peru, Peru, what we call water tracker is the CPI adjustment, and that's based on the IURC calculation. So it's not anything we just come up with, and it's in the ordinance, your ordinance, number 28, 2016, so it was actually in the rate ordinance. And it's again based on the IURC calculation, and for this year, it comes out to 1.2% in Peru. And if you remember why we did this was so that we don't have 50, 70, 100% increases every five, six, seven years because we're not performing our due diligence financially.
Anybody else have any discussion on that?
Yeah.
I move we adopt. I make a motion we adopt.
Excellent, and I'll second that. Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
And for the, and for the record, that's, that's five cents per 1,000 gallons. Is that increased 1.2%?
Five cents for 1,000 gallons?
Per 1,000, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 8, I need somebody to motion to consider. This resolution has to do with establishing a tracking rate for the city of Peru municipal water utility located at Grissom Aeroflex service area. So does somebody want a motion to consider it?
I move to consider.
Excellent. Kathleen moves to consider. Do we have a second?
Anderson, second.
Anderson, second. Excellent. Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes. Okay, do we have any discussion on this? Is this basically kind of like the same thing as the resolution before of what you're doing in Grissom, Josh? Is that what we're looking at?
This is exactly the same language and everything as the one before. It would be a 1.1% because that calculation is based on not anything out of the ordinary, like one-time purchases. So, and they have a different, they have a different revenue stream as far as total revenue, so it's 1.1%. It would be about seven cents per 1,000 gallon.
Seven cents, okay, okay.
I make a motion we accept.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, Pete seconded it, I guess we're ready for another roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, moving on, I just need a motion to consider ordinance number 1, 2021. This is an ordinance to vacate a north-south alley in the city of Peru.
I move we consider.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Mark, second. Anderson.
Was it Mark or Anderson?
That was Anderson, I think.
Okay. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. So I don't know if we have anybody here from the planning commission that wants to discuss this, but this is about.
I'm here.
Oh, Haley, oh, good, good. Do you have any, anything you want to present or discuss with the council about vacating this alley that's on East 8th Street?
The planning commission gives a favorable recommendation of 6 to 0 for the alley to be vacated. It's between the addresses of 117 East 8th and 121 East 8th, and Gracie Nice is actually here if you guys have any questions about why she wants it closed. But she had done this a while back, and the paperwork was never filed correctly, so there's no record that we can find on it. So she's just redoing it.
Yeah, I'd like to know why she wants it vacated.
I want it vacated because I, I live at this address, and there's nobody next door to me, and I've always used it as a driveway. I parked there.
That makes sense.
Anybody else have any other questions for Gracie or Haley?
Sorry. I was at the planning commission meeting, and this was one of the things that we discussed, and we all agreed that it was a good idea. And Gracie is here to ask us for okay for it, and of course I agreed with it, so.
I move we adopt.
Okay, Steve, motion we accept. Do we have a second on that?
Second, this is Mark.
Mark.
Second, Mark. Okay, roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 2, 2021, I just need somebody to motion to consider this ordinance. This has to do with the setbacks.
Thank you, Josh.
Oh, you're welcome, Gracie.
Everybody's talking.
Consider, Kathleen?
Do we have a second on that? Did you get that second, Susan?
Pete?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, roll call.
Okay. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Floto.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, do we have any discussion on this? This was just, I think, some changes that they wanted to make with the, with the setbacks. Haley, do you have anything that you want to add?
I was just wanting to clean it up a little bit. There's currently two different setback ordinances, and so I was just trying to combine them into one.
Nothing actually changing, though.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Nothing actually changing on distances?
Uh, yes, actually. Like, the original, we only use the local street on the original, and they're 25, 45, and 10. So the new one would be 20, 10, and 5 because 154.10 is for, like, the blight properties that had a lot of houses tore down, but they're smaller. So instead of having two different setbacks, just put them all into one.
Haley, Haley, this is Tom Guston. Have you been up here on Oliver Street?
Not recently.
Uh, make it, make a little run up here and, and take a look at this up here. You might have a problem with this up here.
Okay.
Should we table it? Tom, do you think we should table it?
I don't think we have to.
Are they going to be?
It'd be kind of hard to enforce this up here because we don't even have a curb. We have street, and then we have, then we have us.
Yes. I was on that meeting, and we're basically talking about empty lots or where people would build something new. We're not talking about trying to enforce it on anything that's already existing.
That's why I said, that's why I said I think we need to go ahead with this because it's not going to make any difference up here.
Right.
Okay.
Is this making the restrictions closer or less?
It's making it less.
Okay. I know there was some issues about putting a new house on some of these properties because the original setbacks were too much, and there was no way you could actually build on them. So I know they were going to have a lesson to go back closer to the original property lines.
Right. Instead of the side setbacks being 10 foot on each side of the house, it'll be five.
Okay.
And then the front yard would be 20 instead of 25. And the rear would be 10 instead of 45.
Perfect.
Yeah, that sounds a lot better, Haley.
Yes, it does. Makes it more usable property.
For sure.
I move we adopt. This is Tom.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I second, Anderson.
Go ahead with the roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sahadashini?
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you, Haley.
Good job, Haley.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The next thing on the agenda is for Chief Hawke to report on the status of the new fire station number two. Is he here?
Yeah, he is here.
Yes, he's on his way up to the mic.
Yeah, I'd like to report on, we decided, I met with Steve and also with Susan, we decided to keep everybody in the loop on what's going on with Station Two, so there's no questions. And that way we know where everything's going and what's happening. So the following is explanation of financing for the True Fire Station Two project. The project has estimated $235,000 budget for completion. Financing will come from the 2021 seat of funds and True Fire Department received $195 from COVID CARES reimbursement that was deposited back into the general fund. And the money will stay in the general fund, and the money for the Station Two project will come from the seat of funds already budget for 2021 to eliminate the need for two months of reappropriations, which will allow for the project to begin immediately. After the project completion, the current station two will return to the safer sale or rental. The estimated value of the Washington Street building, rep estimate is roughly around $145. No shortfall is expected to complete the project, but if unforeseen circumstances arise, the funds will be supplemented with funds from the True Fire Department Fire Equipment Fund. Fire Station Two is expected to complete around September, hopefully a little sooner than that. And we sort of went on board with Steve Anderson, and I met with him and Susan, and we talked a little bit about it. I'd like to keep Steve on board with this project since he's familiar with building and everything like that. I'm sure he's going to have some great ideas to add to it and to help us along with it. Steve, I just want to say thanks for jumping on board with us. Hopefully, we can all get together here pretty quick. We do have some questions and just continue on with this relationship.
I have no problems with that, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, is there going to be a time where some of, some of us can also get a tour of it?
Yeah, I mean, it's open doors, definitely open door. I mean, anytime you guys want to go out, call me, we'll go out, we'll look, I'll show you what's going on, what are, what we're wanting to do or what we're going to do, I should say. So, yeah, just give me a call, and we'll go out and take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there's nothing else for Chief Hawke, we'll go ahead and move on to Communications.
Tom here. Betsy?
Yes.
Uh, the Solid Waste Commission has decided that we're going to meet, definitely meet, our meetings will be Zoom the rest of the year.
Okay.
And it will be publicized as such, and people, if they want to join, they can.
What committee was that?
Solid Waste District.
Solid Waste. Okay, so you guys are going to do Zoom the rest of the year. Okay.
And the, it looks like the stickers program is working out pretty good when they put that new station down at the end of East Canal Street. It works good.
Good. I think what we're talking about, if we're going to meet in person or via Zoom, I think the plan for the council is to go back in person in April with the option for anybody who doesn't feel comfortable with that could Zoom in. So hopefully, we'll all be back together face to face. We won't have all the technical issues, all the feedback, all the talking, all, you know, over each other. Hopefully, we'll be able to go back in person in April.
Sounds good, Betsy.
Can I, can I, I have just a couple of things. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, for the, the committee that you put me in charge of, Betsy, for the Police and Fire Department?
Yes.
I've had, so, so far, I've had, I've had some really good conversations with Chief Sofiados, and I'm grateful for that. And also with Assistant Chief Matt Feller, two really good conversations. And a couple other police officers, I've talked with them and some family members. But the, and I left work at the firehouse to communicate and haven't heard back, but I'm sure that I'll hear, be hearing back sometime soon, so. But on the committee so far, Matt Feller's going to get somebody from FLP or the Wage Negotiation Team to sit on this committee. Tom Guston's been working with the mayor on some PR type things. And Joe Hayes is going to be on this committee as well. Now, as soon as I can talk with the Fire Department, we'll get, we'll get three people, two or three people from, from them. And we're just going to advocate and try and do whatever we can to help these two departments. And, you know, one's more, one's more critical right now, you know, right now, but.
Is Eric still there?
Yes.
Chief Hawke. Chief Hawke, do you have anybody that comes to mind that you can think of that would represent your department on this committee?
Betsy, I, I believe that's going to be up to the Local 383, who's going to be in reference to that committee. That's something that they need, need to speak with them and the president.
Oh, you're, I missed the first part of that, Eric. Did you say that's, that's your union, or?
Yes, Local 383. So I think that's something that needs to be brought with them.
Do you prefer for them to make the choice on that? And that's, your new union president, I believe, is Nathan Hunt, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So we need to get with Nathan Hunt on that? Okay, good, because I think it'd be great if this, we could get this committee going. I know Tom and Kathleen have already done a great job of starting, starting out. And why weren't, or Kathleen, did you have anything else on that?
I have contacted Nathan Hunt, and he said he'd get back to me, but I'm sure he will soon, so. But that's all, that's all we have there, unless Tom has something. Okay. All right, so just another thing, Miles and Susan. The second round of the CARES Act, or now it's called American Recovery Plan, is, it should be passed on March 14th, and it's going to be strict, more funds are going to be available, so it's going to be stricter and, and, or prone to an audit, not stricter, but prone to an audit. So I'm really looking forward to letting, if you would let us help you with this, so we don't, you know, we take every option available to, to, to help our city as a whole. And maybe we could use some of that money for the Civic Center. I was reading through the, the instructions and guidelines, and I, I just think we have a lot of opportunities to, to use some of these funds. So I'm looking forward to maybe working with you guys on that. That's all I have.
Okay. I, I have one, one thing that I wanted to bring up. I, I wanted to see about establishing, I know Pat brought it up in January, and I thought it was a great idea to come up with a budget committee to help with coming up with the budget for 2021, 22, I mean, 2022. And so I'd like to make a motion to set up a budget committee.
Would that include wages? Wage negotiation?
No.
So I don't know if somebody wants to second that, if they think that that's a good idea or not.
Anderson, second.
Okay, excellent. And so.
We'd be planners.
Right, right. And I think Steve would be a good chair for that because he has some really good ideas, and he's familiar with the budget because he has a lot of experience from when he was on Board of Works as well. So, yeah, I mean, I think it'd be basically like, just the council being more involved with the budget so that when it comes to the council, it won't be like it was last time, that we're going to know the ins and outs of it and also maybe have, not really